Okay, I think we're ready to roll. Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call us back to order. It is 6:30 and we'll just get rolling. The town of Smithers acknowledges the Get'em Done Clan and the Woodsoerton people on whose unceded traditional territory we live, work and play. And the public is notified that this meeting is being recorded and webcast, a notice of which is on the bulletin board outside these chambers. And council may have a motion please to approve the agenda. Counselor Bukama, Counselor Raven, all in favor? Opposed and that's carried. And before we go any further, I'm just going to interject with an introduction. We have a new staff member with us this evening. So beside Mashawn, we have Darlene Goodrick. And welcome. Happy to have you join the organization and to be with us this evening. And as we discussed yesterday, if ever things are not making sense here and you want to interrupt, please do. We rely on you for the good record keeping. So thank you. Happy to have you join us. Okay, and back to the agenda. We don't have any petitions or delegations. And I recognize we have one person in the gallery who was here for the public hearing. So I don't see anyone for the public comment period. Already. And then we're up to section seven, which is the public hearing. And just bear with me while I read the required statement. Oh, yes. Right. I'm sorry. Before we do that, we have recommendation 7.1, which is to rescind third reading of bylaw 1987. Counsel Ray moves. Counsel Patterson seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thanks, Mr. Schroeder. Okay. This public hearing is convened in accordance with the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to council regarding the proposed bylaw. There is one bylaw to be considered at this public hearing. Town of Smithers zoning bylaw number 1987. To improve clarity on the existing zoning bylaw regulations and their interpretation, address emerging issues and correct mapping formatting errors identified in the current zoning bylaw. Once adopted, it will repeal the Town of Smithers zoning bylaw number 1936 in the year 2022 and all amendments. This is a second public hearing for bylaw number 1987. In addition to any new submissions, council will also consider all the written and verbal submissions received as part of the first public hearing held on May 27, 2025, while making a decision on the bylaw. Before the call for speakers, there are a couple of procedural points. So every one of you present who believes your interest to be affected by the proposed bylaw will be given an opportunity to be heard by council. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, please restrict your comments to the content of the bylaw. If you want to speak, please come to the delegation table and begin by stating your name and address. Members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After this public hearing is closed, council may without further notice adopt or defeat the bylaw or alter it and then adopt the bylaw. Council's discussion regarding the proposed bylaw occurs under section 16 of this evening's agenda. Okay. And at this point, I'm going to call for submissions and note that there were a couple of written submissions and we have them in the package. Is there anything, Mr. Schroeder, since the package was distributed?
Thank you very much, Mayor Achill. No staff have not received any additional submissions from the public.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'm just going to call. If you would like to speak to the bylaw, please come to the delegation table. And you may remember, but if you press that button, your mic's going to go live. And if you don't mind, just starting with your name and address for the recording and you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Morris. I live on 1247 Sunny Point Drive. Thank you for having me and opening up this discussion. And I do appreciate the staff actually that going through this process, they've been really great with answering my concerns and I think we are at a crossroads, but I will explain my situation. So the current bylaw and talking with Mark as it stands, this is the existing bylaw. My suite is conforming. Now, what makes it not conforming with the new amendment is the redefinition of what considered is a kitchen and what is considered a cooking facility. So when making my decision to decide to start a short-term rental, I did review the bylaw. I thought, okay, with what I have, what I can offer, I meet the conditions. So I'm just going to go ahead and do it. But I did consider possibly making it into a legal suite. But the challenge was is that my house is built in the 90s. And they put 100 amp servicing into the house. So in order for me to get, let's say, a stove and an extra AC unit, I would be required to upgrade my electrical to 200 amps. And it's underground from the terminal to my home. And the conduit that is too small to fit a 200 amp cable. So I'd have to excavate the entire underground line from my house to the terminal. The cost would be over $20,000. So feasibility wise, it's just not feasible for me to do that. And given that how small the space was, I just thought, no big deal, just continue as is. And yeah, but then now with this new amendment and now the redefinition of what constitutes as a kitchen, it really is problematic for me because I don't have the option to make it into a legal suite. And the other option would be to take out the sink. And really, it's a utility, like I only have the place rented out like 50% of the time. So I'm using that area quite a bit and I do need that sink for my own use. And it really just restricts the usability of the space. And really, in terms of the building code and the in health and safety aspect, there is no real health or safety concern when all you have is a sink. There's no, you know, high voltage electrical line. There's no gas line to stove. So really, the I'm just compliant for the sake of appearance and I really just don't have. And I know I'm not the only one. I know there are quite a few others that are in my similar situation that were required to remove a sink. So then I am asking myself, okay, well, why, why put this in place in the first place? And I do understand that, you know, we do have a housing crisis. I recognize that. And upon reviewing the housing needs assessment for our town, the towns that makes no real mention of what the current number of short-term rental units were at the time. So there were some hypotheticals, like possibly over 100 was one quote of in an article, but no real concrete evidence. According to, so I asked Mark Allen, how many applicants do we have? 30. And so that's 30 out of the 2,400 housing stock. That's less than one, that's about 1.4%. I feel that the creating a stricter, you know, regulation around short-term rentals is granted if maybe those, you know, if we were over 100 or 200. But at 30 applicants, I just don't feel it's justified. My recommendation to council is just to keep it as is with the short-term rental regulations and not add these extra definitions and and to maybe revisit this a year from now, when if it balloons up to, you know, 100 or 200, then we can revisit that and go forward with amending the bylaw. But at this time, I just don't feel it's really justified. Another thing I noticed in your housing needs assessment was that it didn't really take into account foreign temporary workers. So in the 2001 census, the number of non-permanent residents that live in Smithers is 154. So when it comes to like learning, trying to figure out where's, you know, what's, why is the rent so high? What's causing, what's causing the demand? I mean, I think that's a big thing to look into and creating better solutions that fit that demographic. I'm not really for making regulations for that affect people's homes and livelihoods. And, you know, we're already, the short-term rental is only allowed in principal residence. You have to be living in your home to be able to operate one. And I think that's a great start. And I think I'm definitely in support of that. But to put that onus onto a homeowner who's just trying to, you know, make ends meet, offset the cost of living, I just, I don't believe that's the right approach.
Just checking Ms. Morris, if that's the extent of your comments?
Yeah.
I don't want to cut you off.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. To the table, if there's any questions of clarity from council, from Ms. Morris. Okay. Then I think we're good. Thank you very much. And I always know this sounds funny since Ms. Morris is the only person in our gallery, but I'm required to read this. So I'm going to. So I'm going to invite or ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing. That's my second call and I'm going to call for a third time. If there's anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing. That's the third call. And I will declare the public hearing closed at 6:41. Okay. That's it. On my agenda. Okay, folks, then we are up to section eight and the minutes from May 27th for approval, please. Counsel Bukama, Counsel Raven. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Opposed and that's carried unanimously. And the minutes from the committee of the whole from May 20th. Counsel Bukama, Counsel Raven. Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed and that's carried. And we don't have anything under section nine or 10. So I am up to council reports. First up is Counsel Bukama, I think.
Thanks, Mayor Achill. The visitor center report is there for information. And then I also just want to publicly state that I was very appreciative of the opportunity I had to attend FCM in Ottawa last week. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Bukama. And Counsel Elliott.
Just like to report that I attended Pride facilities on Saturday. It's well attended and I appreciate Counsel Ray speaking there on behalf of the town. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Thanks, Counsel Elliott. Counsel Leonard.
I was away last meeting, so I'll just throw in on May 22nd. I, along with three of my fellow counselors, attended the emergency operation center training and it was really good. Very informative for me and I appreciated the information and learning what to do in case of a disaster. I struggle with the museum because their meetings are scheduled on Tuesdays. So they had one earlier this evening. So I haven't been to an actual meeting for a while, but Kira and I, Ms. West, do communicate via email and she wanted me to mention the museum's downtown history walk is running again on July 1st, starting at 10 a.m. at the train station. This year, the walk will feature some of the buildings and places that are part of the new Smithers Community Heritage Register. So keep that in mind. And I just wanted to mention too, that the Central Park Building 100th Anniversary is this Saturday from 10 to 12:30. And there's going to be lots of performances and celebrations. So if you can get out and and attend, that would be awesome. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard. Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Achill. So you'll notice there is a notice of motion from myself regarding the Main Street Market. As it was noted by Mr. George at our last meeting, there actually is no need to make a motion in that it's already planned. So we are welcome to join. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Oh, and you've got some other minutes there. The
These are just for information. Your worship.
All right. Good work. Counsel Raven.
And so my report is in the agenda. Wow, that was a, sorry, apologies for that. That took a minute. One shout out I did want to give was to the Smithers Secondary School girls soccer team who went to provincials and they finished in 15th place, which is actually a record for Smithers Secondary. So that was really exciting. And then under the Clarence Abraham Walk, he has made it all the way to Terrace as of his Facebook post today. So he is, he is getting through on his way to Prince Rupert. And then I have a notice of motion and I'd like to put forward that motion. If I have to read it out, I can do that.
I don't think you have to read it out, Mr. Schroeder. You looked like you were about to say something. Oh, no. Okay. We have it. So we just require a second. Counsel Bukama, Counsel Raven.
So I just know that it has come up at this table several times. We know that there is some issues along Highway 16, especially with vehicles running red lights. And then after attending NCLGA and learning more about this safety program, where when I talked to the people giving the presentation, they said they couldn't guarantee, obviously that a camera would go in, but they did encourage the town to reach out and see what other assistance they could offer. So whether that's increased security or education. So I just really wanted to make sure that we didn't lose that thread and just follow it up on, yeah, what they had suggested and see where it goes.
Any other comments or questions, Counsel Ray?
Yeah, I'll be voting against just because of the possibility of the cameras, just the way things are going in other places in the world and even in Canada with people, our governments becoming more and more authoritative. I'm not really super keen on having cameras everywhere. The other thing is, is that I don't know, you know, I know we're asking for more information, but the cameras is really going to be my stop. But I would prefer to see us do an enforcement list before we go straight to cameras. Because I don't know, depending on where they're set up, sometimes if you start in a yellow and the tail of your vehicle is still in with a red, which is very hard to judge, you still get a red light speeding ticket and or a red light ticket. It's automated. But I think if we had an enforcement list to start out with, we can get the people that are actually running red lights first.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Counsel Raven.
Just to provide further clarification, that is definitely what they said would be step one. They said the likelihood of getting cameras installed is actually quite time consuming and it would take quite a while. The other thing is, is for all of their intersections, they are all of the places where they do have these cameras set up. There is significant signage. Their focus is education rather than just straight to enforcement. Because when they did do the program many, many years ago, it is a different program than this one is. They found that it wasn't, it didn't have the desired results. So what they're really focusing on is the education and enforcement piece, which is why I specified or what it said up to it, including education and enforcement measures to help address the issue. So yeah, I was trying to keep it fairly generic, but thank you for bringing up those concerns.
Counsel Patterson.
I can wait, your worship, if you like. Okay. So I was super grateful to see this put forward. I have significant concerns around sort of pedestrian and traffic safety in our community. But what I would like to see is if it'd be possible to add to our growing to-do list, but at a future community, the whole talk about traffic safety, including the rules and responsibilities of the municipality. So including bylaw enforcement, RCMP and citizens on patrol. Because I feel that when I'm asking questions, I'm not getting clarity on who's doing what. And I recognize things are changing. So for example, learning that the speed watch program, you know, sat in our community for almost two years and we never talked about that. Or, you know, when I brought that up, understanding that citizens on patrol is actually, that was sort of their initiative. But I guess I just have more questions and answers when I ask myself, so what about, you know, safe bike passage? And we voted to say that we weren't going to look at that assessment. And then I think about, well, then what are we doing as part of our transportation plan to ensure safety? My understanding is that we contract out highway patrol services through the RCMP. So I guess I just have a ton of questions then around who is doing what in our community and what is our responsibility? So instead of just, you know, initially jumping to, like, I kind of appreciate what Counsel Ray is saying, saying, you know, we need cameras. I would like to see us have a conversation about what is the role of the municipality in ensuring pedestrian or writ large traffic safety? And what do we want to do about it, if anything? So I'm not sure if that is helpful or not. But I am very confused as to who is doing what these days. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. You're probably not the only one. There was a lot in there and Mr. Stewart, sorry, I just couldn't quite hear you. So you can write it down.
Yeah, I was going to say, certainly if council wishes, we could have a committee of the whole on this in the future. Else if council does have questions, so you can always send any question of any nature to staff and we'll try to answer as best as we can. And we'll share with all members of council.
Thanks, Mr. Durham. Okay, the only thing, like, I don't really mind writing a letter to get things going. The only thing I'm going to say, and I think Counsel Patterson has just gone there, is that sometimes when we bring something to the table like this, and I think Counsel Raven probably due to it as a small thing, sometimes we create a level of work for staff for things that are kind of sometimes outside our bailiwick. This isn't totally outside our bailiwick. But I guess my thoughts are, I'm happy to take on writing a letter, even though in your recommendation, it's not really sure to who, like the relevant parties. But I do think I'm trying to get a bit of clarity on, you know, what citizens on patrol are doing and what the RCMP are doing. So if it works for council, I'm happy to write some sort of gentle letters of inquiry to find out where we're at. Because I think, you know, if I hear what Counsel Patterson was saying, we could swirl up a lot of work for staff trying to figure things out that may not actually be in our jurisdiction. And I just want to make sure that if we're going to send work to staff, we're doing it with intention and know-how so that we realize we're burrowing into their town. And I can see Counsel Raven wants to respond.
So I didn't want to share, there was the pamphlet that was given out, but that was only for local government. And on it was a very specific email address that is not meant to be made public, which is why I didn't want to put it with the package. But what the facilitator said is they can't just pick and choose where they go in. But if there's an invitation, then they take it on. But there has to be an invitation to reach out. They don't just choose a town just based off of a list or where they think it might need help. But if it's just, hey, we saw this presentation. We'd be interested in this assistance with enforcement and education. And then they take it on and the answer may be no, which is fair, which is fine. But I just figured that it was worth the opportunity and it was encouraged by, I forget the name of the two gentlemen that were at NCLGA.
That's okay. Okay. So I'm going to go to Counsel Ray. So what I'm hearing from Counsel Raven is we're going to, if this passes, make an inquiry from the intersection safety camera program to see what might come here. We can make that invitation. We heard the concerns from Counsel Ray, who's not interested in having any cameras in intersections. And then we have a bigger sort of inquiry for information from Counsel Patterson, which might stem from this, but not be exactly this piece. Counsel Ray.
I'm still going to vote against it, but I just wanted to point out that all the intersections of concern that are controlled by traffic lights are on the highway. So I'm assuming would not have much work from the town. Townsend, it would be more highways and I'm sure that there would be a little work on the part of the town, but those intersections are on the highway. So.
Okay. Are we good to vote? All right, the motion's in front of you. I'm going to test the waters here. All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries with Counsel Ray opposed. And I may follow up with you, Counsel Raven, just to get the details. I had the pamphlet, but I might not have it anymore. Okay. Counsel Ray.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I was happy to say the, the opening remarks at Pride and hearing DeBlau's speech afterwards about how the community is feeling with the DEI backlash and what's happening down south. I just think it's more important, more than ever, that council shows their support for these types of activities in the community. I also attended the regional district on behalf of Mayor Achill. There was something else and I have totally, it's totally gone over my head. Oh, yes, meeting with CN Rail. That Counselor Raven and I went to that. And I brought up concerns that we have and I don't want to sound too negative. But every time we bring up concerns, we get safety presentations. And trying to say this the right way is that what they say they're doing and what is actually done often seem to be two different things. And I think by perpetuating that we complain, we get a safety presentation, we're not getting anywhere. And, you know, I can't actually, you know, bring up specific incidences where it didn't match. But I just thought that was an interesting follow-up from that. There was something else, but I'll mention it next time, I guess.
Well, if you think about it, the next couple of minutes, you can interject. Thanks to both of you for attending. Counsel Ray, you're making me think of something. So CN Rail does do presentations. I think we've had them here. We certainly had informal meetings here. And they make regular presentations at the regional district table as well. But I think for those of us that were NCLGA, we also heard the presentations that are dealing with the port expansion. And that's good, except what goes with the port expansion is transport to the port. And so that will mean increased traffic on the rail. It's just got to come that way. So I do think it behooves us to be paying attention to that because they are solitudes. So we have what will happen at the port development, which will be the various businesses that are expanding at the port. And then there is what will happen along the rail line. And that's a different company. And there's different responsibilities for each player. But as a community that is on the rail line, we will be affected by that. So it's not just us, but it's everyone along the rail lines. And so I think it does behoove us to try to stay as in tune as possible to make sure that we are doing everything we can to protect the safety of our community. Since, you know, if there wasn't a wall there, we'd all be looking at the tracks. So I think that the thing you're raising is good. I, you know, I think it's great that CN does the safety training for people, but they are relying on our volunteers. And it will be not just our eyes, but the eyes of communities all the way up and down to make sure that we're not forgotten in the expansion of businesses at the port. So it doesn't mean I'm against the expansion of the port, but the impact will be felt on the road and the rail lines of the communities leading there. I think I saw a hand. Was it Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, worship. I really appreciate the comments that you made. I was at the same training with Counsel Leonard and there was many conversations that were had based on lessons learned due to the lack of emergency preparedness and response when it came to unfortunate disasters related to rail line. So I wonder if there would be appetite or interest from the table to invite CN just to have a conversation with this council. But I would look to staff because I don't want to create a mountain of work. But from that training, we were strongly encouraged to ensure that we had a coordinated approach or response. God forbid something happen. Maybe I would just ask the question through to staff if they're feeling confident that we don't need that or do need that.
Thank you very much. I'll just make a couple of notes. I do know that we had CN and their mobile spill team actually come to the town of Smithers and have a discussion with some members of council and some members of senior staff. I believe that was late last year. So in part, they have actually been fairly proactive on this front. Additionally, I know that our fire department has been monitoring the rail line quite closely, working very closely with CN to make sure that they have a strong understanding of what material is flowing through Smithers and what potential hazards may exist as a part of that. So I do know that our fire team is quite satisfied with the level of information that they've been receiving. More broadly, as the town of Smithers on the disaster side of things, we do we do hold a regular tabletop or actual EOC events like we held a couple of weeks ago in May. So there is a fairly good depth and breadth of information that staff have available to them. And, you know, more specifically on the spill side of things, I actually do know that we have that we have done some tabletops very, very similar to to the challenges of a rail disaster or emergency.
Yes, just going to follow up and say CN, following the the event that we had just the other week, that councillor Ray and councillor Raven attended, they did follow up and they did note the concerns expressed by councillor Ray. And they did offer, and that will be forthcoming, but invite all of council to a safety event that they're going to be hosting in Burns Lake. And additionally, that they are open to doing a safety presentation to council if council so chooses. So I think that's probably their approach, hearing those concerns brought forward by councillor Ray.
Okay, thanks. And thanks for attending that councillor Ray.
I did remember the other thing that I wanted to mention was that I gave an interview with CICK regarding the new library building that we purchased. So and just wanted to thank staff for providing some background information and that was very useful.
Thanks councillor Ray. Okay, I didn't want to forget. So this is it. It's very heavy. So this doesn't have really anything to do with me, but I just wanted to acknowledge the recognition that was given to the town for the the recent celebration for Smithers Skate Park. So you get to have a look at it and it's going to be held at Smithers Works, knowing that the folks in Chris's department are the people who were most closely connected with the work that happened to see the skate park through to what we have today. And thanks to those who went to the celebration. If ever I was sorry to have missed a party, it was that party at the skate park. So for those of you that were there, thanks for being there. Thanks for representing Mr. Lawrence. Much appreciated. And you can take this when we leave. I just wanted to let everyone see it. So the recognition of the town is much appreciated. And I just wanted to say, because I didn't have a chance during the the this phase, the celebration for this phase of the Smithers Skate Park Society, that I think they're an exemplary community organization. So when I was first elected to council and that's, you know, quite a few years ago, there was the creation of what we now refer to as the Community Partnership Agreement. It was created the first time for the proposal to increase the skate park. And the idea was that the town wanted to ensure that what property we would inherit once a community group built it would be to the standards that ensured that our maintenance costs, which are picked up by everyone, would be appropriate. So we wanted to make sure that the skate park was built to high standards, to our standards. And the Smithers Skate Park Society marched along that with us. They have been a great organization in the community. They've raised a lot of money. The actual financial contribution from the town has been quite small. When they came many times to council and said, we would love it if you would give us some money. And we would say no. And then they would go and raise the money and keep on going. And we're very smart about how they did things. They kept us apprised. And they have contributed something lovely to the community and the celebration that they held, I think, is just a testament to the people who run it and what they're trying to do in community. So we're not here to hear my words, but hopefully they can be repeated later. And I just want to really give them a big thank you for what they've created and left in town and the celebration that they provided and gave that much joy to so many people. I was with councillor Buchanan at FCM in Ottawa and I was getting text messages from people up and down the highway going, why didn't you tell me what was going on in your town? And I would have been there. So the word spread far and wide and it was, I was quite happy when I went back to my hotel room and it was the CBC, the moment the closing of the national news was this event. So job well done to everyone. Thanks to everyone in our organization who was a part of it as well. One of those things that really just gives me joy and councillor Buchanan heard about it last week because I was so happy or the week before. So thank you, Mr. Lawrence. You can take this when you're, when we're done this evening. So just two other things. So I was with councillor Buchanan at FCM. In my view, it was a good conference. There's a couple of things about FCM that I like. One is access to hearing the federal leaders in their own time. So rather than hearing a soundbite or a snippet for a few seconds, they have an extended period in which to provide their comments on the day. And of course, we're living in a strange time nationally with relations sort of across the world, but particularly north and south. And so each leader was able to make commentary on that from different perspectives. And I found it very interesting and the notion of Canadian solidarity was high across party lines. Another presentation that really touched me was the US Congress of Mayors were represented along with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So the mayors in both countries are working together to advance what's best for their communities in the face of this trade war. And there was so much similarity where people need trade to happen. They need people to be traveling back and forth and supporting one another. And I think it was the mayor of New Orleans, and I can't recall her name right now, who really clearly articulated the connection between her community and Canada, of course, with Acadians. And said, there is such a close tie between New Orleans and the Acadian culture in Canada that people travel back and forth. And I think she was very warmly received at that when she, you know, maybe it's cliche, but it still means something to me when she finished her words. And with the accent, I can't repeat. And she was like elbows up, we are with you, Canada. And that was a message from all the mayors. So it was something that was very fortifying to realize these organizations are working together across the country, both countries to ensure that trade is protected and businesses are protected on both sides of the border. And then the one last thing was just a follow up from councillor Ray. So you reminded me, I also did an interview today with CFDK on the library project and I will echo the thanks to come to staff for preparing nice talking notes. And that's it. We can move on. There was no questions. Okay, let's go to the 14s. 14-1 report from Ms. Smith on the lease renewal for the Smithers Public Library with a recommendation. Councillor Ray?
Move the recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second or councillor Patterson seconds? Any discussion? Okay, thanks to staff for the work here. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. I'm sorry, and I'm just looking back there, Ms. McKinley, Ms. Goodrick, is everything we're doing? Okay, okay, good. 14-2 report, oh councillor Ray.
Sorry, I'm going to recuse myself as I own chairs and towels.
Thanks councillor Ray. Okay, we have the report from Ms. Smith on the Telus license of renewal with a recommendation. Councillor Buchanan, you're moving. Councillor Patterson, I see your hand. Seconding. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thanks, Mr. Durham. Councillor Ray back. Okay, and just for your information, that was approved. 14-3 report from Ms. LeBlanc on the annual municipal report with recommendation, three parts. All three? Councillor Raven moves all three. Seconder? Councillor Buchanan? Any discussion? Councillor Leonard?
I just wanted to point out, and I saw it in the financial statement the first time it was presented. And I just thought it was a mistake, but I see now it's it's been presented the same way again. So I'm just not sure if that's how it came from the accountants. So it's page 71 and 72 of 96. It's the statement of consolidated statement of cash flows is in there twice. So for, if we're presenting this to the public, we should probably remove one. Please. I think that's the right, yeah, it is. Yeah. It's in there twice. Page seven and eight of the financials. Is everybody following that?
Not yet, but getting there.
Sorry.
Page 174, 175, 173, 174 of the agenda.
Okay. And sorry councillor Leonard, can you remind me which pieces are twice now?
The consolidated statement of cash flows is
Right.
is repeated twice. Yeah.
Thank you.
So we just want to, and like the financial statement is, is has pages, so it must have come that way from them.
We will review.
Good catch though councillor Leonard. Thank you. Okay, and councillor Buchanan?
I just want to express my appreciation to Ms. LeBlanc for this report. I just found it very just very informational reading. It just gave a really nice snapshot of what happened in 2024. So thanks very much.
Thanks councillor Buchanan. Anyone else? It is that, right? It's one more of these reports that are all encompassing and remind us of what's happened and so much work goes into it. And somehow we deal with it in a couple of seconds. It doesn't always seem right, but that's how long it takes to approve something. All right. So with the information noted from councillor Leonard, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried with thanks to Ms. LeBlanc and everyone else who helped. I'm sure there was a few other people that helped. Okay. And we are at 14-4, a report from Mr. Lee, Form and Character Permit Application for 3778, fourth Ave with a recommendation. Councillor Buchanan, you're moving? Councillor Patterson, were you seconding? Okay. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Are you ready? All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, 14-5, a report from Mr. Lawrence on the purchase of VAC truck. Recommendation with multiple parts. Anything you wanted to add, Mr. Lawrence? Good. Okay, looking for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Patterson moving. Thank you. Do I have a second or councillor Raven? Discussion? Councillor Leonard?
I just had a question. So the recommendation is authorizing up to the full amount to be borrowed. But in the, in the package, it looks like the loan calc is only based on 250. Is that intentional or am I misreading that?
Mr. Lawrence?
Sorry councillor Leonard, can you repeat the question?
The recommendation. Sorry, got to find it again. States that council authorizes up to the full amount to be borrowed, the 758,000. But on the loan calculation, the third attachment, it's only the 225. So is, are we only borrowing 225? Okay.
Mr. Lawrence?
Through the merit councillor Leonard, that the loan calculation was used as a template, not as actual numbers. So that's the loan calculator tool. So just as a reference point of, yeah.
So sorry, that might have confused me. So the the recommendation is the correct amount. Got it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Ray?
Other question, comment. First of all, I support the recommendation. We, there was an interesting, while I was at the RD, there is, ran into kind of the same problem where you're ordering a vehicle and they're two or three years out now. So they ended up in kind of the same kind of situation. And I just wanted to to flag that we we keep, especially with vehicles, we're getting into situations where we're having to waive our purchasing policies over and over again. And I, you know, now that we have maybe more capacity in the finance department, I think we need to take another look at the purchasing end of our of our equipment planning. Things have changed. It really looks like you have to order two or three years out. I think we got kind of lucky here that there was something available and it's nothing anybody's done wrong. Things have just changed. And I, and I do want to point out, you know, I ran the, you can't actually run numbers on the MFA anymore, but I took the interest rate. We're going to be paying 60,000 approximately in interest over five years. I know I was in the minority when we put this through through budget, but I don't like borrowing money like that. I would rather have us, you know, work on, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, but work on to get back to where we were, where we have the money to purchase. Especially if we're having to order, then we get a little more certainty on how much things are going to cost. But I'll bring that up again during budget. But all things considered, good work by the staff to make sure that we have continuous service on the VAC truck. So I will support.
Thanks councillor Ray, Mr. Durham.
Yeah, I'll just kind of identify a couple of things based off those comments. So as I think council is quite aware that asset management is going to become a large movement as we continue to move forward. And so that's certainly one that being able to maintain assets, including vehicles, will be important for us as an organization and will be certainly looked at and making sure that the financial wherewithal is there to move forward in the financial planning. Additionally, one thing we've identified as a priority over the next year or so is looking at our purchasing policy. And we do recognize that there has been changes in just kind of the the way the world works and the availability of some of the things through the supply chain. And so that's one that certainly we'll be looking to make sure that we are, you know, continuing to stay nimble with the operations of supply chains across the world.
Thanks, Mr. Durham. Councillor Patterson caught you at that moment.
Thank you worship, Mr. Durham. Answer all the questions. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Already the recommendations on the floor. Looks ready. All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thanks, Mr. Lawrence. Although the next report is from you too. So 14-6 for Mr. Lawrence on the purchase of an interim garbage truck. Sounds funny to say interim garbage truck, I've got to say. However, that's what you called it. So that's it. And we've got a recommendation to purchase an interim truck. Councillor Raven is going to move. Seconder please, councillor Buchanan? Discussion? Okay. I'll just comment, yeah, good work. I mean, these things aren't easy. So thank you for that. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay. Everyone doing okay? All righty, let's, we're going up to bylaws now. And so what I've got is I have done the resenting. So we are at third reading, bylaw number 1987. All right, good. So can I have a motion, please, to put it on the floor? Councillor Buchanan, my councillor Patterson. Discussion? Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor Atro. So before I make a motion, I guess I I'm just interested to hear what the rest of the table has to say. I just appreciate some of the comments that have been made in that I'm still struggling to understand sort of the pros and cons related to providing a definition of a kitchen and our cooking facilities. And I'd be really interested in understanding some of the insights from staff on short term rental thresholds sort of based on on population, just given some of the letters that we received from medical professionals saying that they rely on some of those facilities. So I still just have those two questions in my mind, you know, do staff feel that there's a sort of acceptable limit of short term rentals based on population? Or is that just even crazy question to ask? And then understanding a little bit more around why we are getting really specific in our definition of a kitchen and cooking facilities. But I would like to hear how others feel.
Okay, I'm going to give it to Mr. Durham. I just wanted to comment on one thing you said. You said before you make a motion, but we have a motion on the floor, just as a reminder.
Correct. So my understanding, and maybe I'll look to Mr. Schroder, is that if there was any changes that would need to be made prior to adopting, that I would need to make that this evening?
We could make amendments. We could accept reject. I just meant while there's a motion on the floor, we would have to do amendments. I'm sorry, I just wanted to remind you there was a motion on the floor. That's all. Okay, Mr. Durham, we'll go to you.
Yeah, so I'll try to answer this the best I can. Yeah, so there was a couple of different aspects. So the short term rental thresholds. And with that, that's one that the town of Smithers has opted to move forward with the short term rental restrictions. And so we've chosen to do such in terms of the definition of kitchen. From the best of my understanding, and I'm not an expert on this subject matter whatsoever, but the building code does have strict definitions. And then from the zoning side of things, there's a bit more flexibility, but it's the way that the two different codes interact is where staff is making the recommendation that we do define kitchen.
I'm just gonna add something to that. So Council Patterson, now I don't remember who was at the table the last time we talked about this. But I spent a bit of time with Ms. Chandran prior to the, the public hearing the last time. And in addition to what Mr. Dura has just said, she provided the insight that the way things were described in here were vetted sort of as best practice with planners in her cohort in terms of, this is referring to what a kitchen is, just that part. And so that information was provided that in her recommend, in her professional opinion, the definition is the best practice for kitchen, and that's why it's in here. So just, just for information, because it was at the last. And then, so I'm not touching the one, the latter part of your question. Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Council Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on this is Norris's comment about being relaxed and then tightening them up if we have too many. I, I think it's actually more prudent to have it tighter and loosen where we can. If we're finding there's not enough. I think the, the difficulty with this is, is that the province drove this. And so there was no discussion, it wasn't an option to grandfather or grandparent, anybody that already had a suite, which makes for some difficulty. And you know, I think for years, there was always an informal, you could rent a room. And now it's been kind of formalized. If you want to advertise something like that, you have to have it done. So yeah, I think, I think the way forward here is good. And, and I do know that, you know, if somebody isn't, I, I know my brother had to take an oven out of his place at, at some point, not because he was using it for short-term rentals, but because somebody that lived in the house passed away. And then they had to keep proving that nobody else was living there. So they finally took out the oven. So there are some confusing building code requirements, but I think this is, this is the right way to go.
Thanks, Council Ray. Anyone else? Council Raven?
I, I like how in-depth everything goes. And even if people don't agree on what a definition of something is, at least there's a real definition. Because I find that the way things were before, it kind of left way too much up to the imagination. So even where there might be some disagreement on what things are, I like that there is a definition. So people can now go and look at it and just see what can and can't happen. And I think that we've done a good job of balancing STRs by having them allowed on Main Street, and then also being allowed in primary residences, but not as primary residences. So I think us along with every other municipality in the province, we're trying to find our way. And I'm sure this will come back in a year or so, and we will be revisiting. But I think this is a good starting point. And yeah, we'll see where it goes from here.
Thanks, Council Raven. The others? Council Leonard?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate sentiment that this isn't something that the municipality went ahead with. This is something that was, you know, downloaded onto us from the provincial government, and, and we were forced to, to adapt to those provincial regulations. And you know, didn't really have a choice. And I, I would, you know, I support the work that's been done here. And to Council Ray's point, you know, it's probably better to start here, and then a year from now, we'll see what happens.
Thanks, Council Leonard. Yeah, maybe just a couple of things. I think overall, what's in front of us, the, the, the big bylaw has covered off a lot of ground. As the staff report indicated, you know, covering up or covering some of the, the little cleanups, the amendments, things that have evolved since the last time this was done. And, you know, to the issues that we heard today, there may be things that, you know, where council is going, there may just be disagreement with council staff and some of the residents who want specific things. I think that is the risk of this job, that sometimes we make decisions and they do have impacts on people, and we have to accept, we at this table have to accept that that's the, the price of trying to come to a decision. In terms of short-term rentals, I think one of the, the challenges that we're all going to find in our communities is the changing needs over time. And so at the time when the province initiated that, we were, I think most communities were describing a housing crisis. I think we felt it in this community, and the province initiated something that it was trying to make a difference. Over time, we will find out whether or not those were the right decisions. Some of it was imposed on us, and councils made some decisions along the way to get us to this point. And, you know, different counselors have mentioned zoning bylaws and bylaws can be revisited over time, but right now, the, the two things that we were referring to were the definitions. After my conversation with our staff, I accept the definitions. And we are going to find our way through how we might make changes in terms of secondary suites, short-term rentals, carriage houses, all those things are going to be revisited over time as circumstances change and as regulation changes. You know, the building code is what it is, and we've had lots of feedback in my time here with people not liking things that they need to do with the building code. And our staff simply enforce the building code. That's the way it has to be. We will enforce the regulations that are there. The building code is, you know, set out by another order of government. It is our responsibility to uphold it. And it creates a tension. So I, I just want to refer that we, we feel the tension, and we know that sometimes decisions create hardship for other people. That's, that's kind of, you know, sadly, it's a job we have sometimes. So I will support the staff recommendation, and I will trust that as we go forward, if there are recommendations for amendments to bylaws, we deal with them all the time. And if it is clear that there is a better way, there'll be a, you know, an interaction between residents, people in the community, and staff, and things will make it to this table to consider amendments. And I'll leave it there. If we're ready, I'm gonna call the vote. Yep, Council Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Maybe just for the benefit of the gallery, maybe those who might be listening in, a couple members of council mentioned that any year's time, we would have, there would be a review or discussion. Could we just provide clarity on the process and what we mean in a year? What does that mean?
Sorry, I think that was counselors, councils making comments on, like, sometimes revisions come. I don't know that there's any requirement for one year. We see amendments to bylaws when there's a need, something unforeseen has come up. So I, I think that's probably what's referred to. We can anticipate that at some point, there'll be an amendment to the zoning bylaw, unless I've misheard something from staff. Okay.
Thank you. I just thought that clarity was important, because I heard it a couple of times. So just to be clear, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks for that. All right, council, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and that is carried. Okay. Let me find it. We are at sixteen, three, the report from Ms. Smith, and this is bylaw number one nine nine six, the end. I missed something. Well, I don't want to do that. Okay, I'm going back. Sorry, sixteen, two, I skipped that bylaw, nineteen ninety-five, the Smithers subdivision servicing and development standards bylaw. This is for adoption. Council Raven moves. Council Buca, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. All right, now, sixteen, three, the report from Ms. Smith, the indemnification bylaw, one seven, one, six. And first reading, please. Council Buca, Council Raven, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Second reading, please. Council Patterson, Council Buca. Okay, if there's any discussion, now's your moment. None, all in favor? Any opposed? And third reading, Council Patterson, Council Raven? Last chance, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay, seventeen, one, we have a letter from Ms. Calling Wood of NESA. And right now, I can't do the acronym, Northern Edge Sports Association. And so there is a request here. I'm gonna open the table, and if, if there is a desire for some feedback from staff, one option is to refer to staff. But if folks know where they're sitting, then we'll decide here. So any comments from the table? Council Raven?
So I did appreciate the reach out, and I do understand that they are a not-for-profit. But every sport organization is a not-for-profit, and this table has decided several times that we want to get away from the one dollar a year lease. So I'm not inclined to refer to staff. I'm just inclined to deny the request.
Thanks, Council Raven. Council Leonard?
I have a question on the classification. In her letter, she said BC assessment, when asked, stated that the change to the property looks to have occurred in twenty seventeen assessment year because we were incorrect in our classification prior to this. But they're not a business. They are a nonprofit. So why aren't they being taxed that way?
Mr. Dura?
Yeah, so when you look at BC assessments' definition of what they're looking to be taxed at, they do not meet it whatsoever. It's an outdoor recreation facility that's free of use, and there's a variety of different other elements to it. So it's one that, when we reviewed it, and there again, it's not our jurisdiction whatsoever. But we do understand BC assessments' interpretation of the classification.
You're good, Council Leonard? Okay, Council Patterson?
Thank you, worship. So this is a bit of a, a comment, but more of a question directed to staff. So we've had several conversations around the table related to, you know, our leases, permissive tax exemption, and other sort of cost reduction requests. And I, I guess I just think that we have no metrics or criteria to base these requests on, and that we, my perception is that we'll continue to spend a significant amount of time and money discussing them until we have some sort of process in place. But I'm just not sure if that's even making sense. And I'm sorry, I'm staring at you, Mr. Schroeder, but I'm just sort of thinking, if my question does make sense, yes or no, and do there, are there other examples from other municipalities and how they sort of vet these requests? I'm just thinking in a way that helps to sort of create transparency and build relationships in the public to say, this is how we treat everyone within the community when they make such a request.
I know you were looking at Mr. Schroeder, but I'm gonna jump in and probably go to Council Ray. When we made the decision to remove the tax exemption, we had extensive reports from staff, our previous finance minister, finance minister. What are they called? Finance director, thank you. Who went through many, many communities in the province and presented the information that showed, you know, from a community that, like ours, that had almost no rules about how we would approve to communities that did none, which is where we've now gone. But that was actually quite an extensive process with information provided from staff. Previous council, and this is where I might look to Council Ray, made decisions on grant and aid to reduce those. And Council Ray helped me here, but that was back in the days of the creation, even of the Forest Corporation, where instead of taking a larger shareholder piece, that was meant to be one of the places where community groups could go to get some financing. So historically, some of those decisions have been made based on information at the time. And that leaves us where we are now, where essentially we're not doing the permissive tax exemptions. And we tend not to approve grant and aid with the few minor exceptions being our museum, th- those few that we deal with. Council Ray, though, maybe you can help me out with some of that background.
Well, it, it kind of segues into a comment I had to make, but essentially, we did decide that we don't do permissive tax exemptions. However, this is a public body, anybody can come and ask for anything. But we don't have to say yes. And, and I think the reason we went away from grant and aid, a, now people can go to the community forest. But it was, it was a process, grant and aid was a process that really put volunteer organizations to the wringer to justify why they would get a, a grant and aid, and others didn't. We didn't have a cap on it, I don't believe. We sometimes had a budget, but so, and then some came every year, some came when they only needed capital. And this has been a lot easier on staff. It's been a lot easier on the organizations that do volunteer work. You know, I, we did, we did plenty of notice that we were going to change the permissive tax exemption and, and, and I feel for an organization that all of a sudden asks to pay ten thousand dollars. But when they have nine hundred members, there's a fairly easy way to raise ten thousand dollars, and it's fairly painless for each member. So which is where, you know, why we got away from, from those things is, is everybody was asking for them, and the whole community was having to pay for everything. So I do support just, just not providing an exemption.
Thanks, Council Ray. And Council Patterson, I'm just gonna go back since I sort of cut off your questioning and then.
Thank you, worship. And I guess I was just thinking about, you know, how would you respond in a way that is polite as possible when you're basically saying no, and just trying to understand. To your point, I recall the conversation around permissive tax exemption, but this is obviously specific to the one dollar lease, but I'll just wait until I, I think, read such response as I kind of read where the table's going. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Council Patterson. Anyone else? Council Elliot?
Yeah, through the chair, I had two questions. How much are they paying lease now? And are they paying the property taxes on that whole property? Or is it just where the building is right now?
Mr. Schroeder?
Thank you very much, Mayor Archel. The current rent for the lease is eight hundred dollars a month for the Northern Edge Sports Association. And I'll have to defer on the question of the lot. I believe I know an answer, but I, I predict someone else has a better one than I do.
Mr. Dura?
I could be mistaken, but it would be for the area within the lot that their current lease exists. And I think that's approximately two meters outside of the building or something, five meters. So it's not the entirety of the property.
Okay. Anyone else? So I'm, I'm gonna suggest some sort of response is needed. I don't think we have a motion on the floor. So I mean, we can always do nothing. Staff will take that as direction. We could just move to write back with a response. I'm sensing the table as well. What's your pleasure? Council Patterson?
Thank you, worship. I actually just have another question. So let's assume we get a request like this from a significant amount of non-for-profits in the community. Again, we don't need anything specific like we did for permissive tax exemptions. It's sort of assumed that they're similar. Is that correct?
Do you mean if we had another request for just support, like grant and aid?
Pardon me, worship. If we had another support from another non-for-profit asking for a reduction in their lease or one dollar lease?
Yeah, it's, it's likely we will. We've had requests similar in nature before. And they're hard to say no to, but I think in the last couple of years, I might be getting my timing wrong. I, council has been more firm in saying that we're not going to provide either the tax exemption or grant and aid because we're transferring that cost to the broader taxpayer when we do it. So that's been the direction of council the last years. But as Council Ray said, anyone can ask. There is open, anyone can come and ask us for something, and you never know. Council will make the decision it makes, but for the last couple of years, we've kind of held fast in this. So someone could come. Will probably decline based on past practice the last couple of years, but council can be moved to change its mind.
Thank you, worship. So is it your preference to have a motion?
Well, I guess I think it's good manners to write back. So at the, even if when we're declining to write back and say, we heard your request, and the decision of council is that, like, I think that's, I would suggest that.
I'm willing to move that we write a letter of response.
Council Patterson, seconds. Okay, so we will write, and I'm having to assume, because it's not stated, but we are not providing. So we're declining. Okay, I'm seeing the nons around the table. We're good with that, Mr. Schroeder? Okay. All right, any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, then we are at the eighteen's. Is there any, would you like to pull out? Council Patterson?
Thank you, worship. So just eighteen, one, if time allows, I know staff do an incredible work at coordination for UBC. do an incredible work at coordination for UBCM. But I think it was very polite of them to send us a request. So if it's possible, I would be interested.
Okay. And is there something in particular you'd like to talk to them about?
I'd actually be more interested in just hearing from them about some of the opportunities that they foresee that may be coming to the region. I know the ministry or the province, pardon me, announced in the last month or so a little bit about their sort of strategic energy plan. So if they only want to meet with us, if we have specific issues or comments, then obviously not. But if they felt that they yeah, wanted to chat with us about anything, I'd be interested in hearing from them as well.
Maybe Council Patterson, it for that, for an update, we might be better off to take a an invitation approach to invite BC Hydro to come and be a delegation where it's less formal and without the time crunch of UBCM. And then we could have a more open conversation. I think these meetings at UBCM are a bit more directed generally. Okay, Council Buca? Okay. Okay, I thought you were trying to jump to this. So so just as an alternate, because I think it was last year, we did request a meeting with BC Hydro. It ended up being converged with the Minister of Energy at the time. And it was for a specific issue and it it really drives down to whatever it is might be on our mind. But, you know, there's lots of activity happening with BC Hydro right now with expansion in the the transmission lines and the capacitor stations. I even think I read recently that there's going to be another public meeting process, Mr. Duer.
Yeah, BC Hydro is gonna be hosting a open house on June seventeenth from four to seven PM. That'll be at the Prestige Hudson's Bay Lodge. And that's just gonna be outlining some of the changes that they're proposing and some of the improvements that they're looking at doing.
Was that what you were gonna say?
Mr. Duer just stole my thunder. I was gonna.
I am so sorry. So sorry. Okay, do you want to echo it? You're good? Okay. Okay, does that work, Council Patterson?
Thank you, worship. And I will just say I I had I had attended the Skinner Roundtable this morning. So you'll see my report of the next scheduled meeting, but a lot of the conversation was around the announcement around, you know, strategic land use planning and wanting to obviously plan for the future, in particular, you know, the mining economy that is northern B C. And so I just had some questions or just interest in maybe hearing from them to, I assume that there's going to be an increase in support from BC Hydro as well. So I think a delegation would be great because then it could be unique to our region or our area in the province. Thank you.
Okay, and Council Ray?
Yeah, I can't recall how big the trade show is at UBCM in Victoria either, but usually at the larger trade shows that go along with UBCM, BC Hydro does have the booth of information as well.
Thanks, Council Ray. Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to mention earlier in the meeting, Council Leonard mentioned that she was unable to attend a museum meeting. And I I just wanted to say, I I think when we are attached to a committee and a meeting is happening and we can't attend, but we feel like a council member should be in attendance. I'd be more than happy to fill in for someone. I did that for Council Elliot a while ago, and I personally find it quite interesting just to sit in on some other committees. And so anyway, I just want to throw that out there.
Thanks, Council Buca. Council Leonard?
I appreciate that, but it actually happens on council meeting nights. Yeah, that's the problem.
I always thought their meetings were earlier in the afternoon, but they don't do that anymore. Okay.
Five PM. So.
Okay. Any last comments? Anything from staff? Okay. Oh, well, thanks, everyone, and particularly to the recording desk. Thanks for your attention. We appreciate it very much. And with that, a motion to adjourn, please. Council Buca, my Council Patterson, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thanks.